Hey guys, uh my name is Drew Bowser. If you haven't been paying attention to some of the interviews we've done, we've gone and we've interviewed all four Onslow County Sheriff's candidates. And now, under request and by request, uh we're moving to the county commissioners candidates. So, uh and by the way, I'm, I'm a former Marine, I'm a combat veteran, I'm a firearms instructor, and I want to educate people on local elections. This stuff matters. It's so important to be involved. So I have with me today Will Argonbright, and he is running for county commissioner here in Onslow County. So, he's here to tell us about why he's running and what he stands for. And uh, and without further ado, you know, Will, why don't you tell us who you are, why you're running?
Yeah, well first of all, I gotta say thank you guys for watching and, and thank you for, for doing these types of things. Like we were talking about a few minutes ago, it's so, so important to get the word out to people before the primary election happens, uh because after the primary, you're locked into your three choices. Uh but I, yeah, I'm Will Argonbright, I'm running for county commissioner. Um I'm a retired Marine, uh Marine Corps gun recharge and combat veteran too, uh both Iraq and Afghanistan. Um during the, my term is, uh in the Marine Corps, we were bound by the Hatch Act, so I couldn't get too involved with politics. Uh but as soon as I retired, I started getting, getting more involved. Um I started going to my, my local precinct meetings, the GOP meetings and things like that. And every step along the way, I've seen something that kind of disturbed me. Um and I've wanted to get more, more educated and uh, and get more involved. So I became a precinct chairman for Holly Ridge. Um and started that precinct up from scratch, uh to what it is now, which is um, yes, it's growing. And the more people that get to come, uh learn more about it, it's fantastic the way it's moving now. Uh I sat on the, the board, um the Onslow County Republican Board. Um I was a representative for the 3rd Congressional District. And I've even served as the Legislative Committee Chairman for Onslow County. Uh basically what that is, is we researched all of the legislation that comes out and we briefed the, the public on what it is, who's signing it, who's presenting it, you know, the primary signers and endorsers. Uh and what the bill uh essentially means, what, what's coming out of this.
That's awesome. I didn't even know there was such thing.
Yeah.
Educating people in layman's terms, what's coming down the pipe.
Yeah, cuz if you've ever read a, a bill that comes from, you know, Washington or even the state, it's so hard to understand what all the legal terms are.
Right.
So, you know, we, we sit down and we read them and we're like, okay, this bill uh is super important and it means X, Y, and Z. So, the reason for that is if, uh if the people have a, an objection to what's happening, then they have that ability to contact their congressman, their representative and say, hey, don't sign this, don't endorse this, don't vote for it, we don't like this. Uh or, hey, this is a great bill, move forward with it, that's what we really want to see. So it helps people get, get uh more engaged.
Yeah.
Um so that's what I've, what I've been about so far with uh, in the political realm. Um I've been serving with nonprofit organizations since before I retired, uh veteran support groups. Um I'm an avid outdoorsman, uh so a couple of them have, well, they have always been outdoor related, hunting, fishing, camping, biking, hiking, you know, the, the whole nine yards. Uh because I've found, and I'm, I'm sure you, you're familiar with it too, one of the biggest things that you lose when separating from, from the military is that camaraderie. Uh so we try to bring that back uh through outdoor exercises, you know, like the things that I mentioned.
Right on.
Uh so, super important, I've had a lot of great encounters, um and life-saving encounters actually. I mean, places where, you know, people were at the end of their ropes and had it not been for that organization, um you know, they may not be with us today.
Yeah.
So, and I, I find veteran uh, veteran outreach, veteran services, super, super important. Um you know, being one of them, it's a, it's a huge passion of mine. Um outside of that, uh I'm the co-pastor at my church. I started off as a Sunday school teacher, uh moved up to the, to be a youth pastor, and then moved up again uh to be the, the co-pastor at my local church. So, and with that, I've done a lot of community outreach with uh food banks and, you know, those kinds of things. Um you know, missions projects. So, community involvement and so, and service to the, the community has been a huge part of my life um for a very long time.
Awesome. Yeah, and one of the things that, and I, I'm just gonna be straight up honest with everybody. You know, the county commissioner position, okay, there's seven members, right?
Right.
You know, where my father's from, up in, up in PA, you know, their county has three people, which is interesting. Every county's a little bit different. I'm gonna be straight up, I have some ignorance when it comes to this position. What does the county commissioners do? Why should people care about this race? Because I don't know if there's so much involved i- in our daily lives as, as say, hey, a sheriff's race. Can you educate us on why this is important, why this is an important bill to have in the county?
Yeah, so the, the uh, the county commissioner is the legislative body of the county.
Okay.
So every ordinance that you have out there, when you can burn, when, where you can shoot, um what land zones for residential versus agricultural, um where schools are built, you know, all of that has to do with the county commissioners. So the, one of the primary roles of the commissioner is in budgeting. Uh so we get the, the county budget and we determine how much that the sales taxes is gonna be. Right now it's set, we can't raise it any higher or lower. Um the, uh, the property tax especially, uh they, we have complete control over Onslow County property taxes. Um right now, I don't know, a lot of people have their homes revalued, right?
Right, I've heard about that.
It's been a huge raise in their amount of property value. My house raised almost a hundred thousand dollars, which is almost what I paid for it to begin with.
Right.
So that's-
We expect taxes to go up perhaps?
You would think, right?
Right.
So, a lot of the, the county commissioners currently have had a lot of pushback on that, so they're saying, hey, we're gonna lower the tax rate so that you have the same amount of property taxes coming out of your, out of your check that you would have had last time before the revaluation. The problem with that is, if, once it goes down and they see they don't have enough money, all they gotta do is raise it back up. Um that, I am not a, a, a proponent for property taxes, period. I don't believe in property taxes, because if you have property tax, that means you will never own a thing in your life. You buy a piece of property, you buy your land, you buy your house, you're supposed to be able to pay that off at some point. And now you have a house, you own it. As long as there is a property tax, you don't own it.
That's right.
You still pay for the right to have your, your property, uh so-
That's right.
Have you answer that is, we have no other option currently to replace a property tax with something else. Um I would rather see a sales tax increase and a property tax go away, so that we make the same amount of in, uh income across the county, but people that are paying that tax are people that are driving through, people that live here, and it's based on your income. The more you spend, the more taxes you spend, uh you know, the more taxes we get. And it just makes more sense to me to do it that way than to tax. Sixty percent of the, the budget comes from property taxes.
Is that right? Okay.
So, sixty percent of the people are paying a hundred percent of the, of the burden.
Right. So there's no way to do away with a property tax, is what you're saying?
Not right now.
Is that a state issue?
Well, it is, because the state doesn't allow us to adjust the, the sales tax.
Okay, gotcha, yeah.
If the state said, yes, you can increase your sales tax by a quarter of a percent,
Right.
then we could drop the property taxes to nearly zero.
Yeah.
And it would be on your, you go out, you, I think what we're paying right now total is about seven cents per dollar, right?
Sure.
Um if you were paying eight cents per do- per dollar, that's all we would need. Or seven and a half cents per dollar.
Right.
That, that's a huge difference in income, that's just that half a percent, or half a cent.
Yeah, that's interesting. So, like I was telling Will, you know, we talk a lot about the Constitution in my class, the checks and balances of this document. I carry it in my pocket, alright? If I can pull it out here, I'd like to show it off, alright? Pocket Constitution is one of the best ones, kinda worn out, right? It's a document full of checks and balances, okay? And I was telling him, I'm kinda like a Barrick's lawyer, alright, so take that for what it's worth. Uh but, as far as the county, checks and balances at the county level, right? So you're saying that the county commissioners are the legislative body. The executive branch of the county would be what, the sheriff? Sort of?
Um, they would be the, the, more, more judicial than, than executive.
Okay.
The executive branch would be like the, the county commissioners.
Okay.
We, we would be like the president, um then you got the Department of Justice.
The DA or something, right?
Yeah, the DA, the, 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 the legal side of it, being the judicial branch with the Onslow County Sheriff's Office. Um and this is, this is a very broad brush kinda look at it, it's not really like that.
Right.
Um-
But there's checks and balances within the county, so when you guys are voting on something, ordinances for instance, that's fascinating to me, because that, that would affect us absolutely, cuz we shoot out here, okay? So, ordinances, you know, if there was something to be passed, basically it's a majority vote of seven board members, right?
Right.
And that's it. There's no, there's no other check or balance outside of the county commissioners, there's nothing, there's nothing.
The only thing that you have as a citizen is your ability to, to state your opinion during the, the meeting.
Okay, yeah.
And you usually get about five minutes, and this is one of my biggest issues with the current board right now, because I've seen the, uh, the chairman shut people down when there's, when they're on their five minutes of, of speech, you know? If I've got a problem, right, and I'm a citizen and I take it, I take time out of my day to come to the meeting, and I've got a grievance, I should be able to state my grievance, even if five other people before me stated the same grievance.
Sure.
Right? So I believe in listening to the voice of the people, um whereas, you know, some don't. Some, some don't believe that you, you should have much of a voice, they think they know better than anyone else and uh, you should just sit back and color.
That's the problem with government at every level.
Yeah.
I mean, you got people like that, they need to go. So I, so I wanna get more educated on this, who's, who's running, who the incumbents are, and uh, and you know, so you're, you're talking about the chairman, who is the chairman right now?
Uh, the chairman of the board is Jack Bright, he's not up for reelection.
Not up for reelection?
Not yet, uh that'll be next cycle, so in two more years, he'll be back up for election.
Okay, so the other candidates that are incumbents that are running right now, who are they?
So, we've got three incumbents and uh, three challengers. Uh the incumbents are Tim Foster, Mark Price, and Roy Spennett.
Okay, and what are your thoughts on those guys?
Well, I think they've all made, made some mistakes. Uh primarily, I think the biggest mistake they made was uh the purchase of Equine Country. Not saying the purchase itself was bad, but let me tell you the, the process that that underwent. And you can look up WITN uh news article, April 6th, 2021, to verify what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Um, so yeah, April 6th, that was the day, I believe the day that the, the land purchase was signed. So you've got a sitting North Carolina senator that approached the county commissioners and offered to sell up a piece of property, valued at three point four million dollars. He was selling it for one point two five, I believe, somewhere in that, in that range. Um, not in and of itself a bad thing, you've got a piece of property, you wanna sell it, you offer it for sale. Where we, where the commissioner board went wrong is they did not give the public any notice. And some of the other commissioners have stated, well, when you're purchasing property or where you're looking at selling your property, you don't advertise it to the world, because that's gonna raise the prices and increase your competition. You should be increasing your competition, you're a county entity, you're a government body.
Right.
If you don't give the opportunity to the public, then you have no right in buying it to begin with. Um but my, again, my problem was, it took one week from the time the county announced that they were gonna sell the property, or that they were gonna buy the property, to the time that it was, um, the, the signature went on the paper that it was ours. During that week was Easter. So how many people really got to pay attention to it? Not, not very many, right? Because like you said, not a lot, a lot of people even know what the county commissioner board does.
Right.
So, take into account the amount of people that pay attention to the board in general, then the shortened time span of which uh, the, the notice was given. Now, in that timeframe, there was a petition signed with over, I think around two thousand or more names saying, delay. Don't, not stop, we just wanna know, what's the profit, uh profit and loss margin on this property?
Sure.
What is it gonna do for us? How much are we gonna have to spend to keep it up and to improve it in order to make it a usable piece of property for Onslow County? Ignore it, completely ignore it. Then, on the day of the meeting, again, I said you have your five minutes of, um, of public comment,
Right.
when you get to state your opinion, twelve people spoke out in that meeting alone to say, no, don't do it. Zero people spoke in, in uh, in support of. None of that mattered, they signed it anyway. Then, a lot of the citizens were asking, okay, well, give me the details, how did this come about? Why is it such short notice? We're gonna file a Freedom of Information Act request and get all this information from the county, so that we can know what really happened behind those closed doors. The county tried to charge thousands of dollars for Freedom of Information Act. Um now, state statute says that they can charge a reasonable fee. I don't find a couple thousand dollars or more to be very reasonable.
Right.
Um I know I can't afford two, five, two to five thousand dollars to, to get some information. Um so, again, that entire process was just completely kicking it into the stands.
Yeah, yeah, most people don't even know about that. And you, this is, you know, the first time I've heard anything like that. I don't know what the status of that property is, but there needs to be some trade. I think that if there's one word to describe Will and his campaign, it's transparency.
Transparency, yeah, exactly.
Transparency, I, I mean, I really, I think people really, really appreciate that. That whole story turns me off from any incumbent whatsoever. Now, I've contacted every commissioner candidate, um some of them did not return my call, some of them did and would like to meet, and uh, I'm offering that uh opportunity for, for anybody. Uh but uh, yeah, that's, that's incredible. Let's take a quick break, uh just go ahead and pause it. There.
Okay.
Alright guys, we're back, uh and uh, one thing, I'll just jump into this right away. I really like his shirt, alright? And one of the things I ask people when they come here is, what kinda Republican are you? So he's got a Rush Limbaugh uh shirt, rest in peace, you know, we were, we were huge Rush Limbaugh fans. I was listening to Rush since I was a little boy with my dad in the, in the car. So, tell us what kinda Republican you are, I really like your shirt.
Uh so, the term Republican has gotten very, very twisted in a lot of places. If you look around the um, the gambit from local to national politics, you can find a Republican just about anywhere, um that you don't really consider a Republican, because they have an R next to their name.
Sure.
There's a, there's a term going around called Rhino, I don't know if anybody else has heard that, R-I-N-O, Republican in name only. Um so I'm, I'm very much anti-Rino.
Yeah.
I don't think that, uh, I have, my problem isn't necessarily with the Democrats, because at least they're honest, right? At least they present their, their case, um and they are true to their beliefs. But my problem is with other Republicans, that just because they have an R next to their name, they get elected, and but then they act completely in opposition to the, the Republican values.
Yeah.
Um, you know, Republicans were founded on freedom, um that we freed the slaves, we, uh, you know, Emancipation Proclamation, um civil rights, you know, all of these things were Republican values and that's, uh, you know, the, the constitutional core of who we are, that all men are created equal, um and all are created with, by the, or endowed by their creator with certain inalienable rights, life, liberty, pursuit of happiness, you know, that's Republican to me. Uh but the, the term Republican has sometimes gotten, gotten kinda twisted. So a lot of times I refer to myself more as a constitutional conservative.
Right.
Um and when I say a constitutional conservative, it's also important to throw in the originalist in there. Uh because I believe in the Constitution as it was originally written, originally intended, it means the same thing today that it meant back when it was written. Um and there's a lot of people who give lip service to, oh, I, I, I support the Second Amendment, for instance. Well, I, if you say I support the Second Amendment, but?
Yeah.
Stop.
That's right.
Just stop.
That's right, yeah.
So, but that, so that's the kind of Republican that I, that I am. Um and you mentioned the shirt, so I'm gonna tell you a quick story, if that's okay?
Yeah, please, please.
Uh I too am a huge Rush Limbaugh fan. I've, I've listened to his radio shows for, I don't even know how long, and Rush is right, right? He said Rush is right, and everything he's said has come to fruition in some form or fashion. But this shirt has nothing to do with his, with support of his radio show. Um, getting back from a deployment, uh 2008, 2009 timeframe, um I got invited down to uh, a, an outreach program, a, called Renewal Coalition in Florida. And I was like, you know what, that's, that sounds cool, it's a bunch of veterans that get together post-deployment, kinda decompress, um spend some time together, camaraderie, we know, that type of thing. Uh we went down there for a week and had this fantastic time. Towards the end of the, uh, towards the end of the time we were there, this guy comes out and he presents us each with these gift baskets. This shirt, a couple other Rush Limbaugh shirts, uh hundred dollar gift, Visa gift card. Um, you know, there, there was like a ton of stuff in this gift basket. And we're like, oh, that's awesome. There's a card from Rush Limbaugh.
Oh, that's awesome.
Rush Limbaugh had supported the entire program that we were at. He, had never said a word, none of us knew that it was him.
Yeah.
Until the very end, and, and the fact that he, out of his own pocket, was supporting local veterans, um you know, their decompression time and stuff, just blew my mind, because it's like, this guy, he's got so much other stuff going on, he's got so much to pay attention to. I mean, I can't say enough about, you know, who Rush Limbaugh was as a person outside of his radio personality.
Right.
Um he's just a phenomenal person, an example to, to, to everybody of who you should be as a person.
Yeah, that's incredible, what a cool story that is. Yeah, I mean, I've, I've heard stories about Rush off of his radio show doing great things for vets especially, that's really cool.
Yeah.
That's really cool. We miss him, we miss him a lot, twelve to three, it's just not the same, it's just not the same. I don't know, there's two other guys, just not the same. Uh, yeah, so uh, you know, and I tell people that, you know, my politics are to the right of Genghis Khan. So you may not agree with all my politics when it comes to, you know, uh, the, you know, right, right wing kinda stuff. I'm more of a libertarian. Um, there is an issue that came up, uh, that my neighbor asked me to ask you.
Okay.
Okay, and she is very interested in the commissioners' race, okay? And this is from my neighbor Wendy, she's awesome. She's the president of the White Oak uh baseball and softball league right down the road.
Awesome.
So Parks and Rec kind of umbrella all that, right? So, and we're coaches down there too, we coach 12U softball and 12U baseball. And uh, so the competition with White Oak is Richlands, down there, Sneed's Ferry, Dixon, who else? Southwest. Southwest, all that. So, uh Wendy went down to the commissioners' meeting with a bunch of people from White Oak, and she's been very concerned about how White Oak has been around for fifty years and nothing has changed. Everything out there at the school has been donated by the parents, fields, lights, fence, concession building. The White Oak area needs a park, and not just for baseball, that is her concern.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, she came to the board and had her five minutes of uh public comment and was talking about a dugout that was covered by a parent in a tarp that had been-
That's funny, yeah.
That had been uh damaged during Florence.
About that, yeah.
Yeah, so I, so I watched, I saw her.
Still covered by a tarp.
I, I'm-
Yeah.
I'm paying attention, so I did, Wendy, I saw you, and I think, thank you very much for your public comment, um, I think it's important. Uh, if anybody remembers what the response to that, that, that comment was, that's a school issue. The park, the Parks and Rec Department doesn't cover uh ballfields that are um owned by the school, that's the school board that needs to take care of that. I was about to say something I probably shouldn't have, but BS.
Right.
BS. General statute states that the taxing authority, that's the county commissioner board, is responsible for building, equipping, and maintaining of school facilities. We give the, the, the funding for those things to the Board of Education, and they are supposed to do the things that they're supposed to do with them, to include improving the fields and uh taking care of the dugouts and things like that. But as a commissioner, you're responsible to oversee all of that. If it's not getting done, it's not the Board of Education's fault that it's not getting done, because you pushed a pile of money across the table and told them to spend it how they want.
Right.
So, we have a funding formula in Onslow County that tells the, the, the board and the, uh, the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, what money is gonna get spent where and all that stuff. We, we push it across the table and say, here's all the money you asked for, we give you, I, I believe it's thirty-one point six percent of our total budget, all of the property taxes and all the, the um, sales tax. So those, those pots of money, thirty-one point six percent of it goes over to the Board of Education to do with what they want. Uh, a lot of the commissioners say, leave them alone. What they're gonna do with it is what they're gonna do with it, they're an elected body. If the people don't like what they're doing with the money, they can elect somebody else. True, true statement, but by ignoring the general statute that says we're responsible, we're neglecting our responsibility as commissioners to oversee that process. Uh so, I agree with Wendy, we need another ballfield or, you know, something in this area. And White Oak hasn't moved, I mean, in a long time. And to have a, a facility that hasn't been addressed in any way, shape, or form for, what is it, three years now? A dugout re, being rebuilt is not that hard, doesn't cost that much money. Um I think it's just the fact that it's, nobody's paying attention to it.
Yeah.
Um and here's, here's why, I believe. The county commissioners get a binder, you know, on, say, Monday. Monday morning they get a binder, and it's got all of the agenda items for the next meeting. So they've got a week to go uh prepare for what they're, they gotta research it, do whatever they're gonna do, and prepare their vote. If you just open the binder and do your little Google searches, you're not gonna be an informed commissioner.
Right.
You've got to open the binder, see what's going on, then go out and talk to the people and say, hey, look, this is what's coming up, what's your opinion on that? You need to come over to White Oak and say, hey, uh, ball parents, I see that there's something that you, you guys are talking about, a dugout, what's going on? Talk to me about that.
Yeah.
X, Y, and Z is wrong. Well, now I've, I've got some informed information and I'm representing the people, not my binder.
Right.
Right? So that's what, that's, that's the biggest disconnect, I think, in the, the county commissioner board right now, is they just look at their binder, they've got a couple of them, uh and I'll say this, Walter Scott, fantastic commissioner, one of the best I've ever seen. Um and he's been out and about talking to everybody the entire, entire time he's been elected, it's almost two years now. He's been out there constantly. Um if I had to emulate anybody on a, uh, the commissioner board, that'd be the guy.
Yeah, that's awesome. Yeah, I mean, that, I would really appreciate that, if a commissioner came down to our league and just said, and said, hey, coaches, parents, guess what? You know, uh, we got a commissioner coming, wants to talk to everybody, and just kind of address that. You know, I think, that, that would be a good thing for you to do, maybe as a candidate, because-
I'd be happy to.
Yeah, that'd be great, maybe we could step that up, um, cuz you'd get a lot of support, a ton. So, yeah, that was one of the reasons I started doing this, is because local elections matter. It's that time of year, we're driving around, we see everybody's signs, and we don't know what these people look like, let alone what they stand for. Will has one of the coolest signs, alright? And I'm, I'm just gonna straight up tell you guys right now, I'm endorsing Will, one hundred percent. You need to tell us what you need for us to do to help get you elected, whether that's, you know, uh, funding or signs, getting people registered to vote is a big thing. The deadline for that coming up, you guys need to get registered to vote if, if you're a Republican, because that's, that's what matters, you gotta get out there and vote. Tell us what we can do to help you out.
So, so I'm a grassroots candidate, um I don't have a whole lot of funds. Like I was telling you earlier, the, the meeting income in Onslow County is forty-six thousand dollars. That means a lot of people are living payday to payday, um and they're, and they're working a lot of times two jobs. I, I work two jobs. Uh I work in Wilmington, uh Monday through Friday, and I work in Jacksonville on Saturdays. I do uh vehicle inspection, safety and emissions inspections, right? So, I understand, I'm in that same category. Um but if you want regular people to be elected, you need the regular people to do it. And I have done no, no fundraising at all, because I understand the regular people are the ones that I want to represent. And normally, they can't afford to, to give you a hundred bucks for, you know, signs. So I don't have a whole lot of signs out there, I've got some signs coming uh from, from a few, you know, very generous friends that have really helped out. So funding, yeah, if you can do that, that's great, but if you can't, that's okay. Um, if, if you're trying to run a grassroots campaign, you need word of mouth. I need people to invite me over to the ballfield and say, come talk to the parents and the coaches and the staff. Um, I need people to come and do this, this kinda thing, right here. Let's have a conversation and get to know uh really what you're all about. I did a, a meet and greet not long ago, where I didn't barely even talk. I invited other people that know who I am to stand up in front of the, the camera and say, what do they think about me?
Right.
What, who do they think I am? And, and uh, you know, those kinds of things. And the biggest, the very, very biggest thing that you can do as a voter, grab your neighbor, grab your neighbor and your other neighbor. Grab your neighbor, your neighbor and your friend down the road, and go vote. That's, that's it. The average election in Onslow County for local elections, twenty-five hundred voters, that's it. So you got, what, three, five hundred people in Onslow County that follow you? Um, that's a quarter of the vote. If everybody that's watching this right now went to the polls on May seventeenth and cast a vote for the informed candidate, I'm not saying vote for me. I'm saying vote your conscience and vote for who you've researched and if you know.
Alright, he may not say, but I'll tell you to vote for him. Okay, uh, this is, yeah, absolutely. We gotta put a link in the description box about where to register to vote and get, get that information out there. Because I've, I'll tell you what, I'm so motivated about this particular position now because I didn't know really jack shit about county commissioners, but they are involved in so much. Uh, and this is really, really important. So the other, the other guys, is there anybody else on this ballot that you, I mean, I don't know if that's something that you, you're willing to do is, 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 hey, th- these other guys are good to vote for.
Yeah.
Or not, or not, right?
No, absolutely.
Wait, there's like Lisa Carpenter, I reached out to her, I reached out to, to these three incumbents.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know wh- where they're at, you know.
Yeah, so I, I've, I think we are, it's time for a big change.
Yeah.
I think it's a clean sweep kind of, uh, kind of thing. I think the, all three of the incumbents need to, to move on and do bigger and better things with their life. And, uh, and give people a, a chance to, to refresh the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah.
Um, so yeah, Lisa Carpenter, fantastic. Mike Kaylee, great guy.
Okay.
Um, all constitutional conservatives, uh, they, they've all got their own individual interest, intricacies that, uh, you know, they're a little bit different. Um, but they all have the, the heart for service. They all have the belief that the, the county commissioner board needs to be more transparent, that we should represent the people more, that we should go out and talk to the public. Um, you know, the average citizen about what issues they're having and not just sit behind the podium with our binder and call it a day.
Yeah. That's one of the biggest problems with government is you have people that just stick around.
Yeah.
They stay at the federal level. I still can't believe how many people have been there for decades and they just get rid. I mean, so at the local level, you can have the same problem. And like when I interviewed the sheriff's candidates, that's something that came up as well. Um, you know, Jacob Donaworth had some great things to say about you. He's, he's, you know what, honestly, all four sheriff's candidates, I could live with him as a sheriff. Um, and I haven't like officially endorsed anybody. Uh, but you know, Colonel Thomas, he's, he's, uh, he's, he's been there for a while, but he's absolutely a consummate professional. That's one thing that I recognize about him. You know, JJ's cool too and, and, uh, and, uh,
John.
John Yop, I'm sorry, John. John Yop, how could I forget you? Alright, but, uh, I don't know if there's anybody else, you know, in these other races that you, you know,
Yeah, um, there, again, I think it's a, a clean sweep kind of time. Uh, we need to change all of the incumbents and get some, some good professional, uh, individuals in there. I've got some people on the, uh, Board of Elections, our Board of Education that I'm really paying attention to. Um, Brad Williams, fantastic. Absolutely fantastic guy. He's a, he's a retired Marine as well, um, and local pastor. Me and him met when we were both youth pastors together.
Sure.
So I've known him for a good long while. Uh, Louis Rogers, another good candidate. He's got a great background in psychology and, um,
Also Board of Education guy.
Yeah, a Board of Education guy. Uh, and his work with, uh, you know, um, work against, uh, sex trafficking, you know, it, that is huge to me. If, if I have somebody in, in the school board that is, um, a consummate professional when it comes to protecting children.
Sure.
That sounds wonderful to me.
Right.
Uh, and then Sean Popvin, he's another really great candidate. Um, and, and I'll say this about the incumbent, uh, Bill Leneer. He's been a fantastic, uh, person on the board. I have a couple of issues with some, but some, some of his votes specifically with the mask mandate deal.
Yeah, tell us about that.
Uh, you know, and here's, here's another role of the county commissioners and, and any local poli- uh, any local, uh, government official. You are the first and last line of defense for the people that you serve. If you are not willing to stand on your values and lose your position, then you shouldn't be there. That's, that's my opinion. So the Board of Education voted, uh, to proceed with the mask mandate that, that the state was saying they had to do.
Sure.
Did they have to do that? Absolutely not.
No.
The state would have mandated it and it would have happened anyway. Why not let the state take that blame?
Sure, exactly.
If the state wants to do it, then by all means, state, you do it. I'm not doing it. So that, that I think is a, is a huge deal to me, uh, especially if you come down and say, we're not gonna vote for this. And then you turn around and vote for this.
Right, exactly.
So, so that's a big, that's a big drawback for me.
The Board of Education, real quick, I don't wanna go too long here, but I'm, I'm fascinated by this. The Board of Education, why should we pay attention to that election?
That one's huge too. If you have any kids in the school system.
Yeah.
And, and we are constantly growing. You got new, new students coming in at a regular basis. The, uh, the school board writes policy and, uh, hires and fires the superintendent.
Sure.
So the superintendent oversees all of the schools, all of the principals, all the teachers, all the facilities, the well-being, being of the students.
Curriculum.
Yeah, the curriculum.
Curriculum.
So the curriculum comes from the state. Uh, so there's very limited stuff they can do with curriculum.
Okay.
But they can.
Talk about critical race theory, that's a state issue?
It is a state issue, but you have a board that can go up to the state and say, listen, all of my parents are saying, don't do this. We don't want this. And, uh, and every one of the candidates across the board, regardless of incumbent or challenger, all say, critical race theory is horrible.
And how many people are on the Board of Education anyway?
That one I'm not a hundred percent on. I think it's eight.
Eight people?
But I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent on that one.
Are they all Republicans too that you know?
Um, I don't believe so. I think there's, I think there's a Democrat or two in there.
Okay, we'll, we'll pause it real quick. Is it? Alright, so we're about to close up here. One other thing that I think county commissioner might be involved in, one thing that I kind of resent, this is something that I see more and more of. You know, people are moving to Onslow County and you start to see a lot of the rural areas getting encroached with these developments, right? So as a hunter, as an agriculturalist myself, you know, I kind of resent that. I like to see more conservation of, of rural areas and less development, but I don't know how a county commissioner can affect something like that. And I know that there's a lot of people out there that feel the same way. You, you know, you drive by, you see, you know, uh, more and more houses going up, you know, that's never, that's never a good feeling.
Yeah, 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 and that's, that's a huge part of the county commissioners.
Yeah.
Development of the, of the county, that's, I'd say ninety percent on the back of the commissioners.
Yeah.
And, uh, and I'm, I'm with you. I'm an outdoorsman, avid outdoorsman. I love hunting and fishing. Um, and when I drive past the, what used to be a, a forested area and it's gone, like what in the world?
Dude, it feels like you get punched in the gut, man. Cause like, you know, where we're originally from outside of Philadelphia, we both have a farm background. My wife and I, and you know, that just, it just kind of ruins the landscape, ruins everything. And I understand people need houses and stuff like that, but I think we need to slow it down a little bit. I mean, at the expense of, of destroying our rural roots and our agricultural roots and our hunting roots, you know, to put a subdivision in, I kind of resent that.
Yeah. Well, one big issue that we're facing is, and I, I hate this to use the word issue when I talk about growth, cause that growth is not an issue.
Sure.
It's an opportunity.
Yeah, opportunity, yeah.
But, but we do have the, a, a problem in Onslow County with the lack of housing, you know, and that's why these housing developments keep popping up because we are on track to grow at an exorbitant amount of, uh, of people per year. Um, especially out towards Holly Ridge, Sneed's Ferry area. We're, I, I believe Holly Ridge is, is ranked number two in the state for the, for the growth.
Wow.
You know, we're the second fastest growing, uh, city in the, in the state.
Well, there's nowhere to build down there.
Yeah.
Got friggin' beach on one side and you got friggin', eh, new river on the other side, man.
Yeah, definitely limited. Um, but yeah, we needed to pay close attention to, uh, where we're building, you know. You've gotta maintain your wooded areas. You've got to. Because otherwise, all the wildlife, where are they gonna go?
Yeah.
Right? So where, where are you gonna go? And we're in a agriculture, on a hunting community. Where are the people gonna go to hunt? Um, you know, so those kinds of things you've gotta take into account, but also traffic patterns.
Yeah.
We, we, we throw up a, a development or au- authorize a development in a certain area and zero impact to the, uh, the roadways that they're, uh, you know, how's the traffic pattern flowing right now? If we put a development there, are they even gonna be able to get into their neighborhood?
Right.
You know, so those kinds of things, we, when they, when we built, um, Coastal Elementary School in Holly Ridge, that is built in like the worst possible area. Um, it's a, it's a two-lane, small road. Uh, feeding from the, from Highway seventeen on one end and a rural area on the other end.
Yeah.
Traffic in that one section has gotten horrible, uh, like almost overnight. As soon as the, the school opened, bam. I'm just waiting for some bad accidents in that area, cause I've, I've watched, uh, people trying to get out of the school for twenty, thirty minutes, just trying to get out of the parking lot.
Wow.
Yeah, so, so impact to our, to our, our wildlife, to our wooded areas, to our agricultural areas and to our traffic, that's all things that need to be taken into, into consideration, not just, hey, we found this cheap land, we're gonna build a school on it. Um, and, and with, with building schools, we need to be very, very, uh, aware of how we're building them so that we're not building a new school every couple of years. We can actually expand a school rather than building a new one. Um, I, I heard one of the commissioners talking about, well, if we build a two-story school, it's gonna sink.
What?
Well, I, I've got a construction background. I, I've done footers and foundations and I've, I've done roofs and I've done, uh, you know, drywall and, uh, right now I sell flooring and, you know, for new construction. I, I've got a little bit of familiarity with, uh, with the process of construction.
Sinking buildings?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, there are areas you've gotta take into account that there are areas with soft soil and you can't necessarily build right there. But if you can't build a two-story, you can't build a one-story.
You can't, yeah, you can't park your car there.
Yeah.
Be careful, it's gonna sink. That's pretty funny.
So I would definitely take into account the fact that can we build a two-story up and then expand later?
Sure.
When it, when that, uh, ability comes about, but.
Yeah.
But yeah.
That's pretty cool. Yeah, we were talking a little bit about constitutional carry. That was a big reason I started interviewing the sheriffs because I think it's ridiculous. Are you originally from North Carolina?
No, I'm, uh, from Roanoke, Virginia, but my dad was a Marine.
Okay, right on.
I was, I, I lived in Jacksonville when I was three.
Yeah, so he's a, he's a native for all intents and purposes. Like where we come from in Pennsylvania and most states, because you're an American, you can bear arms, you can go and buy a handgun like you would an AR fifteen, instant background check is done. All of that. In North Carolina, we've got concealed carry laws that go back to, I think, a Jim Crow era where the sheriff can restrict when you purchase a handgun. Concealed carry process is just a pain in the ass. And you know, that's what I do for a living. So, I mean, I don't know, I know that during the forum for the candidates, second amendment issue came up, right?
Yep.
That's interesting to me. What, how, how do you feel about that? And, and
Yes.
Why, why did that come up?
The issue was, the, the question was about red flag laws.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's what, what sparked the whole conversation about the second amendment. And when we're talking about red, red flag laws, the first thing you gotta consider is the violation of someone's due process.
Yeah.
Right? So that, that to me right away is a no-go. Um, the constitution says you have the right to due process. You have the right to face your accuser. Uh, red flag laws, uh, uh, subvert the, the second, fourth, fifth, and sixth amendments.
Yeah.
So all of those across the board.
So how much county commi- how is that relevant to a county commissioner? I'm surprised that question came up to you guys.
It's really not, uh, because we don't have any role in that, uh, other than we could write an ordinance, uh, that states something about it, I guess, or, uh, write a resolution in a, in, in opposition to it. Uh, I, I pushed last election cycle, I pushed the, uh, the other commissioners to do the, uh, the sanctuary city, or sanctuary second amendment city, uh, for Onslow County, uh, which they did. Uh, so I was very grateful for that. The weekly worded, but hey, at least we got something done.
Yeah.
Um, but when it comes to constitutional carry, that's a, that's a redundancy.
Sure.
The constitution already says you have the right to keep and bear arms. So while I, yes, I would love for the, for the country in general, for the state to, to pass a constitutional carry law, it shouldn't even be needed.
Right, that's right.
But, yeah, so when I say I'm a, I'm a firm believer in the second amendment, I mean, I am a firm believer in the second amendment. The original intent for the second amendment.
Yes.
And it has nothing to do with personal protection of your home or hunting and fishing and all that good stuff. It was there. Think, think about it this way, our founding fathers did not just come back from a hunting trip. They came back from overthrowing a tyrannical government. Uh, and they put this in place just in case it ever hap- had to happen again.
That's right.
So.
It's what I call the final check and balance in our constitution.
Yes.
Is the rifle in your house?
Yep.
Alright, Jacob Donaworth said I should make a T-shirt that says that. Maybe we'll work on that. The final check and balance is the rifle in your house. I really appreciate that viewpoint. Um,
But I will say this too.
Yeah.
Uh, while I, I mentioned earlier about the, the, the county commissioners being the, the, the and I'll be all the first and then last line of defense to the citizens, but the county sheriff is the absolute most important office in the county. And not just for our county, but in the country in general, the sheriff's office is the highest office for, uh, for law enforcement. And if you don't have a good one in there, if you don't have a good constitutionalist in there, then you, you're in, you're in trouble. Um,
Yeah.
And I'll say this about, uh, Chris Thomas. He is an absolute one hundred percent original constitutionalist and I, I endorse Chris Thomas for sheriff.
Alright.
Absolutely one hundred percent.
How about that? Yeah, yeah, Chris Thomas. I, I just, I know he had the experience. I just didn't know where he stood on the politics as, as far as that goes. You know, there was a, there's a sheriff down in Florida that, I don't know his name, but I kind of like, uh, there's sheriffs out there that make a name for themselves because they take that role so seriously. Like there's some guy in Florida, some sheriff that says, if, uh, if Fauci steps into my county, I will arrest him on the spot.
Nice.
I thought, wow, that's pretty ballsy. Alright, that kind of, that kind of sheriff, uh, appeals to me. Alright, if you've got criminals at the federal level that are violating your rights, okay? Uh, very interesting. But I think we're running out of time. I could do this all day. I think, well, I think Will's awesome. You guys need to get out there, get registered to vote, and we need to get this guy in the office. And I've never said that on camera on an interview before, so just straight up, with Bowser's Castle, we, we endorse Will. If, is there anything final you wanna say before we close out? And like and subscribe to our channel. Comment below if you got any questions and I'll follow up and, and get, uh, the questions to Will and, uh, and we'll, we'll get a response, but go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, check me out at willargrenbrite.com. Um, I don't know if you wanna put that in the comments section too.
Yeah.
Uh, you can follow my webpage, uh, it's, search for me on Facebook. Uh, both of them have my cell, my cellphone number and that's my personal cellphone. It's not, not some burner phone that I'll throw away after the election. That is my personal cellphone. You can reach me at any time unless I'm sleeping, and if I am, I'll call you back. And that's, that's how we hooked up.
That's right.
He, he called me and I called him back. Um, I, I believe in the, uh, the individual voices of the people and I wanna hear from you. Uh, so yeah, check me out on, on my website, willargrenbrite.com, uh, Will for Commissioner, uh, on Facebook. Um, reach out and I'm, I'm all about it. So, yeah, let me, let me be your voice on the, uh, on May seventeenth, I can't stress to you how important it is for you to come out and vote, um, and bring a friend and talk to your, talk to your neighbors. You've got to have informed voters on the primary if you want any change.
That's right. That's representative government right there. Representative government, that's what we need. Alright, guys, thanks for watching.